Okay, we all ready? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the December 1st meeting of Yellow Springs Village Council. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Winchro.
Here.
Askland.
Yeah.
Sims.
Here.
Houche.
Here.
Mary Ann McQueen is out this evening. Also present is Winter Chief David Hale, I do believe, somewhere. And Village Manager Patty Bates.
And who's that guy sitting to your right?
I'm sorry.[26.52][26.52](Laughter).
Who are you again?[28.52][28.52](Laughter).
This is Chris.
This is the village solicitor, Chris Conard. He could have been sitting a little closer, I guess, and then you would have noticed him. He's kind of missing me.
Cozy.
Cozy, yeah.[40.22][40.22](Laughter).
Well, we have a very exciting thing. Okay, ladies, is everyone here, or should I? Are we all ready for the girls?
Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts, are you all here?
I'm missing one. Well, I'm missing one can't come in. I'm missing one more.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and do the minutes?
We'll hold announcements.
And we'll go ahead and do the minutes of the last meeting. So, page one. Page two. And I will interject here to say that I think both Brian and I had sent just typographical corrections to Judy earlier in the day, so on your table you will find a corrected version, but we didn't get into any content. So if any of you have content, that would be the thing to point out. Page three. Page four. I would like to note, after both ordinances, it says that I opened the public hearing. We really didn't have a public hearing. We just asked for citizen comment. The first one, Winchro asked for citizen comment. There was none. And then down, closer to the bottom, Winchro, where it says, "Winchro opened the public hearing," I would like to substitute, Winchro asked for public comment. Page five. Page six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. I have one here, closer to the bottom. The fifth paragraph up, Winchro commented that she considers the site developable and noted that she had passed the site along for a jobs Ohio inquiry to Green County Department Page 11. I would note that if this didn't get corrected, that near the top of the page, the second paragraph, Sims suggested paying the requested amount. Winchro agreed, but commented that, I don't know that I said council, I hope I said staff needs to have more authority. Page 12. One last thing, near the bottom. Winchro announced a chamber meeting for Thursday on marketing and plans for the holidays. Can I have a motion to accept as corrected?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, sign if you're gonna be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Still waiting?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go, we'll do other announcements, and then we'll wait for her, and if there's, if she, then we'll just go ahead, after we've gone through the rest of the announcements.
She just watched us.
Oh, great. I recognize them.[239.31][239.31](Laughter). So let's go ahead and do the, do this ceremony. So Patty, I would actually like you to describe the project, and...
Well, this project actually started before I got here. The Girl Scout Cadet Troop 3-0-0-03 requested permission from interim Village Manager Kent Bristol to be allowed to clean up and restore the amphitheater, which is, for those of you who don't know, we have an amphitheater, which is this way. And it's, it's really a beautiful site, and people use it for weddings, and we've had people ask to stage plays. But it was overgrown, there was a lot of poison ivy and debris back there, and these young ladies took it upon themselves to clean it up very nicely for us. And they've even talked Principal Houche at the elementary school into making a maintenance agreement with them to have some of the students from the school maintain that area and keep it nice and clean for us.
And council has a, something that they would like to read, a certificate of appreciation that they would like to present. Girls, if you would come up, and leaders.
They're your leaders, right there.[322.69][322.69](Laughter).
In sincere appreciation for the efforts of Cadet Girl Scout Troop Number 30,003 in cleaning and repairing the area in and around the John Bryan Community Center Amphitheater to make it more usable and enjoyable area for the residents of and visitors to our village. The Village of Yellow Springs now presents the certificate of appreciation to troop leader Nan Meakin, co-leader Shelley Palaces.
Yes.
And Cadet Scouts Effie Palaces. Why don't you raise your hands as I name your, okay. Hannah Lawson. Jude Meakin. Sarah Zedlovitz. And Haley Qualls. And she is, Haley is the one missing, and Annalise Fisher. Great. Presented this first day of September of December 2014, signed by myself, Karen Winchro, Lori Askland, Mary Ann McQueen, Gerald Sims, and Brian Houche. Congratulations.[386.41][386.41](Applause). And we're looking forward to continuing your great work.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Ladies.
I just want to announce that the Community Access Panel meeting is going to be this Wednesday, December 3rd. We needed to avoid the later in the month holidays, so we moved it up.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to a review of the agenda, is there, we do have one piece of legislation we're adding, 2014-63 Resolution. It's a then and now certificate. Anything else that council wanted to entertain adding to the agenda, or moving around anything?
Well, let me just ask this. We put in, we submitted the proposed Community Access Panel survey. Do we need to talk about that as council, or isn't enough just to kind of have seen it?
Is this something that you're planning on putting out?
Yes.[467.12][467.12](Laughter).
Let's just put it under new business and...
Okay.[472.87][472.87](Laughter).
CAP survey, okay. Anything else? Okay. Lori, do you want to review the petitions and communications?
Sure. We got two letters from Zoe Van Eatonmeister and Corey Whitaker regarding the police specifically expressing concerns, well, both of them expressing concerns about Officer Penrod and the incident with Ms. Vanis from last, that we discussed last time at length. And then Zoe Van Eatonmeister's letter was, also included concerns about the hiring process for the new chief. Brian had a letter about the CAP survey, but we'll be talking about that later. Bruce May is the director of the ACE Drug Task Force, and they had a very large arrest and taking of about a million dollars' worth of illegal drugs from a drug trafficking organization. And two of our officers were involved in that. Officers Penrod and Howley were both, both participated and were praised in the letter from the director. And...
Did you see this? It was on the table? We might want to just remember.
Oh, yes. And we also got a letter from Vicki Hennessy that was just on the table, but regarding Morris Bean and concerns about the well field.
And I'm sure that's something that...
Yeah, I have a meeting set for tomorrow, actually, with Vicki, and I'm trying to get one set with Morris Bean for next week.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings and legislation. First, we have second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2014-25. I'll let Judy read it.
Okay, now, do you want this by title only, or the whole shebang?
Go ahead and, oh, let me see. Let me look at it. Since it's a rate increase, let's go ahead and read it.
Okay. This is amending Section 1048.05A of Chapter 1048 Sewers and Sewage of Part 10 Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 1048.05A service charges. Village Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1. Section 1048.05A of Chapter 1048 Sewers and Sewage of Part 10 Streets, Utilities and Public Service Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio be repealed. Section 2 that a new Section 1048.05A service fees being part of Chapter 1048 of Part 10 of the Codified Ordinances of Yellow Springs, Ohio be enacted to read as follows. A. Each customer connected to the municipal water system within the village shall pay a monthly sewer service charge, which includes a readiness for service charge, RFS, based upon the customer's water meter size and a sewer charge for each thousand gallons of usage. The effective date is January 1, 2015. The RFS rate per month is $11.80. The consumption charge per thousand gallons is $5.70. Section 3 of this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force at the earliest period allowed by law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Patty, say a couple of words about this.
This was the ordinance that council talked about previously. We had a forgiveness on the first 1,000 gallons of sewer that was treated at the village water reclamation facility. To make it more compatible and as it is with water, with water you pay a capacity charge, and then you pay for each thousand gallons. But on sewer, you were paying a capacity charge, but you didn't pay anything for the first thousand gallons of treatment. What this ordinance does is make it more compatible with the water charges and the way that that is done. And it was the simple measure that was brought before council to help with the budget situation in the sewer enterprise fund.
And it will basically keep us in the black.
It will keep us in the black.
It will keep us from going into the red.
Correct.
So it's, it's, we are still going to be doing a rate study...
Correct.
...in 2015, but this was a recommendation made by Melissa, Finance Director, to correct, and myself. Bridge that gap rate, okay?
And so the rates haven't changed here, just the first thousand?
Rates have not changed. It's simply that we're, that each user is now paying for that first thousand gallons to be treated.
This is a second reading and a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing.
Was it a second?
Yep.
I didn't remember that.
Seeing and hearing no comments, I will bring it back to council table. Any last comments from council? Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Askland.
Yes.
Houche.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Winchro?
Yes. And I hate to do this to you, Judy, but again, because it's a rate increase, I'm just gonna ask to have this read in full.
This is amend, this is ordinance 2014-26, amending Section 1060.06 Service Charges of Chapter 1060. Storage and collection of garbage and other use, other services of Title VI, Other Public Services of Part 10 Streets, Utilities and Public Services of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio. Whereas the village has a contract with Rumki Waste Incorporated for solid waste rates and yard waste collection as authorized by Ordinance 99.0-08. And whereas due to the high cost of fuel and additional fuel surcharge will be billed to each customer, and whereas current charges will fail to meet the financial obligations of current rates charged by Rumki and the fuel surcharge cost associated with providing said service, and whereas it is village council's intent to amend solid waste rates to meet the aforementioned financial obligations, now therefore the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1. Section 1060.06B1 shall be amended to read. Charges. 1. The base charges for the collection and disposal of garbage, refuse, and/or recyclables shall be in accordance with the following monthly rate schedule. Note, the references to quantities below are exclusive of the supplemental volume of bulk items from residential premises and the volume of recyclables from recycling bins provided to all customers. Monthly charge per volume of garbage collected weekly effective 1/1/15. Not more than 35 gallons, $1.96. Not more than 65 gallons, $13.11. Not more than 120 gallons, $14.26. Not more than 150 gallons, $26.22. Not more than 180 gallons, $27, $27.37. Not more than 240 gallons, $28.52. Not more than 270 gallons, $40.48. Not more than 300 gallons, $41.63. The fuel surcharge will be adjusted on a monthly basis based on the Department of Energy's Energy Information Administration Highway Diesel Price Index reading for the Midwest region on the last Monday of the month. The fuel charge, surcharge will be added to the monthly rates in accordance with the attached fuel surcharge table. See attached. Section 2. Section 1060.06B5 shall read, "The village manager is authorized to provide for the occasional collection of extra containers from householders and commercial operators on the basis of a container charge of $2 for each yard waste bag and $1.25 for each extra trash sticker. The village manager shall provide the rules. This shall include a monthly yard waste program." Section 3 of this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force at the earliest date permitted by law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Again, just as Patty said with the last, we were in a deficit situation with the solid waste fund, and this was a, a simple stopgap measure to preclude that from happening. This is a fund that basically, the money coming in goes out. We don't have to build a large reserve in this fund. And we will be, in 2015, probably towards the end of 2015, August of 2015, looking at negotiating a new solid waste contract. So hopefully we'll, we won't have to do this. We'll get, we'll have a better system for how we're charging the solid waste. Council, any comments or questions? This is a second reading and a public hearing. I will open the public hearing for public comment. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy?
Yes. Askland.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
Winchro?
Yes. Okay, next is reading and public hearing of ordinance 2014-28, accepting fourth quarter 2014 supplemental appropriations and declaring an emergency.
All right. Whereas ordinance, ordinance is 2014-07, 2014-08, and 2014-18 were adopted to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014. And whereas village council makes supplemental appropriations to reflect adjustments which occur throughout the fiscal year. And whereas this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to preserve the public interest and provide for a special emergency in the operation of village services, such emergency being the urgent necessity to provide for legitimate expenditures and amend the annual appropriation. Now therefore, the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1. To provide for expenses and other expenditures of the said Village of Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, the following sums are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section 2. That there be appropriated from the general fund. The total general fund appropriations current are $3,462,921. The supplemental is $65,710, making the amended budget $3,528,631. Section 3. That there be appropriated from the following special revenue funds. The total is, the current budget is $1,658,938. The supplemental is a negative $59,480, making the amended budget $1,599,458. Section 4. That there be appropriated from the capital project funds. The total is $327,300. The supplemental is $105,000, making the amended budget $432,300. Section 5. That there be appropriated from the enterprise funds. The current total is $6,117,447. The supplemental is $95,645, making the amended budget $6,213,092. Section 7. That the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. The grand total appropriations for all funds current is $11,566,606. The supplemental is $206,875, making the amended budget $11,773,481. Section 8. Finance Director and Village Manager hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section 9. This ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary to preserve the public interest and the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village wherefore this ordinance shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption by council.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Patty, I will turn this over to you for an explanation of some of the, if council has any questions, maybe just do a quick review of some of the major changes.
These were simply things that were either overestimated or underestimated during the year, or something came up during the year that caused the expense to increase. The biggest one is probably in the facilities improvement fund, and that was to cover the library roof. That money had to be moved from one line to another to cover the difference in the library roof. That was the 105,000. We did also have the additional vac truck payment that Melissa spoke about at the last meeting, because one had been made in January, and she didn't realize she was going to have a second one come this year, because the one in January was actually late, because it wasn't paid in 2013, as it should have been. The rest of them were just smaller adjustments in the budget. Some things were, came in under budget, were underspent, which is why you saw the actual negative in one of the areas. But they're just the general adjustments that need to be made to the budget to make it even out at the end of the year.
Council, any specific questions for Patty? This is a first reading, but it's also a public hearing. This will be the only reading of this. It will go into effect immediately, as it is an emergency ordinance, so I will open the public hearing. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I will bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Houche?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Askland?
Yeah.
Winchro?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2014-29, accepting annual appropriations for 2015 and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Whereas this ordinance is adopted to make appropriations for expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015. Now therefore, the council for the village, oh, wait a second, do I have the right thing?
Yeah.
Yes, I do. Sorry for that moment. Now therefore, the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1. To provide for the expenses and other expenditures of the said Village of Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015, the following sums are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section 2. That there be appropriated from the general fund. The total general fund appropriations are $3,793,852. Section 3. That there be appropriated from the following special revenue funds. That total is $1,225,401. Section 4. That there be appropriated from the capital project funds. That total is $925,000. Section 5. That there be appropriated from the enterprise funds. That total is $5,216,940. Section 6. That the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows, and that grand total is $11,161,193. Section 7. The Finance Director and Village Manager hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except to persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section 8. This ordinance shall take effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Section 9. This ordinance is hereby, actually, we needed to delete section 8, but section 9. This ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary to preserve the public interest and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village wherefore this ordinance shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption by council.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
And just to clarify, the emergency nature of this, we are going to do two readings of the budget. We will have the next reading at the December 16th meeting, but we're declaring it an emergency so that it will be in effect for, by January 1st. So Melissa, I think we knew that Melissa was not going to be at this meeting. She did provide us with a letter of description. I believe that an extra $405,000 for the loop completion project was added to the budget, and there was 225,000 added for the, from the general fund to pay for what is anticipated to be required for 2015 for the consultant, for the water plant.
For part of it.
For part of the water plant. I mean, that won't, that will likely not be the entire contract, but probably what we do in 2015. So I, Patty, I don't know. I, I'm just gonna suggest that, you know, we, well, we can hear from citizens, we can hear any comments, if people have questions, we can pass it along, but that we not make any change, adjustments to the budget at this point, since Melissa isn't here to review it and discuss. And we can do that at the next meeting if we decide we want to do that. So Patty, anything you want to add?
No, I think, you know, the, the budget that Melissa submitted in the ordinances is what was discussed at council and during the, what, five or six budget sessions that we held. And she did make all of the adjustments and, and explain them quite well in her email. I think everyone got that. If you have any questions, we can certainly answer them. Melissa, we'll be back in next week, and we can, you know, make any adjustments next week for the final reading of the budget in two weeks, if council wants to do that.
Questions, comments? Citizens, any questions or comments about the 2015 budget? As I said, we will be doing the second reading at the next meeting.
Melissa will be here.
And Melissa will be here, so we will probably have a little bit more in-depth discussion about it. Okay? Seeing none, we'll come back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Sims?
Yes.
Askland?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
Winchro?
Yes. Next, we have Resolution 2014-61, approving a cost of living increase for staff.
Okay. Whereas Yellow Springs Village Council amended Section 252.05 of the Codified Ordinances with the passage of ordinance 2010-26, which established, established a new methodology for the adjustment of employee wages. Whereas the village manager has used its methodology and has recommended that the village employee wage scales be adjusted by 1% effective to January 1, 2015. And whereas the village council has concurred with this recommendation and asked that legislation be prepared to authorize the adjustment, now therefore council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1. The village employee wage scales be adjusted by 1%. Section 2. This increase is effective January 1, 2015. Section 3. This increase will not be applied to the salary of the village manager, village treasurer, or law director. Section 4. This resolution shall be in effect and in full force upon its adoption.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
And if you notice, I don't know if you noticed, that on the table, we had provided, Ruth Ann had provided information about the neighboring communities' cost of living adjustments. And I believe, actually, at the last meeting, that Patty had mentioned a 2% increase.
It is actually included in the budget at 2%. But giving, given the financial situation of the village right now, I did lower it to 1% in, in the legislation. If council wants to make it different than that, that's certainly up to council, but given the current situation, I'd lower it at 1%. And we do have, you, you will see that no one around us is giving less than 2%, but that's the...
And I was, I think I asked, I, I know, I read it in the minutes.
For the position description and any...
Yeah, and rough, some, some kind of salary comparison.
We haven't been able to get those yet. Did you send out the email to your clerks?
Well, actually, I thought we asked to sort of hold back on that, given that...
Right. I think that's right.
Yeah.
Go back eventually.
Still do it. Yeah, the difficult part of salary comparison for us is that we have so many combined positions.
Yes.
You know, Joe does the water plant and the water reclamation facility. Johnny does electric and water distribution. Jason does streets, parks and rec, and sewer collection. And in most places, those aren't combined positions. So it is going to be difficult to compare an apples-to-apples kind of salary, since we combine positions in that way. But we can certainly give it a shot if that's what council wants.
I think, I mean, I think that that's actually something that Kant had had on his agenda to look at. It was salaries, but it was also just understanding the position descriptions and fine tuning[1746.33] those. I think that got put on the back burner with the new manager. It might be something that Patty's able to pick up. But I'm not sure that, you know, it directly connects to this.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, right now, it would just be good to know kind of where we are, at least some key positions.
Well, what I thought we might be able to do, and I talked to Melissa a little bit about it, is maybe doing like a weighted average kind of the thing for, say, taking Johnny's position and take an electric superintendent in our distribution, and kind of doing a weighted average of those kind of things.
That would be good.
So I don't suppose, besides getting the numbers, there wasn't any sort of like narrative about why they chose those numbers?
No.
And the only other piece that I feel like, you know, could enlighten us a little bit is, you know, to maybe have done a two- or three-year comparison. And I'm not suggesting that Patty, that staff should have done that. It's just that, you know, it's possible that these communities didn't give raises last year.
Right.
So, and I believe we did.
During the, during the worst of the recessions, many communities were flatlining.
Right, exactly.
And we never did. So I'm, I hate to do it to staff, but I feel like a 1% is safer for us right now. So I would go with 1%.
I agree. I think it's physically proven and prudent, and I think that's a good recommendation.
I hear your recommendation, but, you know, I think our folks do a heck of a job. They did a heck of a job in going through what they felt they needed for 15, and reduced it and so forth. I'd like to see it at 2%. This is my feeling.
I mean, I think we could, we could look at two other possibilities, is compromising it at 1.5% or the possibility of revisiting, adding the extra, adding another percent, say, at the half-year.
Certainly.
If we, once we see how, if anything, maybe revenues will be increasing or things. I mean, people are taking on more work. We are getting busier, we're going to have a busy year. So I definitely do agree with Jerry that our staff is very heavily worked and doing a great job. But I, you know, I'm looking to be conservative, as conservative with the budget as we can be. Any?
Can we look at it again in six months?
If that's what counsel wants to direct to do, yes.
If things come to fruition, as the guys and gals went through their budget and reduced, and I think if it stays that way, of course, there are some things that are going to be out of their control. But, you know, if they stay prudent, I think we should reward them, if we can.
Yeah, if counsel wants to revisit it in six months, that's certainly, the counsel's prerogative, and be happy to do that.
I would support that.
That sounds great.
Okay. Any citizen comments? Seeing and hearing none, we'll come back. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2014-62, Approving a Contract with John Young for the Position of Assistant Village Manager.
Okay. Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs has been without an assistant village manager for the past 15 years, and whereas village council wishes to again employ an assistant village manager, and whereas, following a thorough search and interview process, John Young has been offered the position and has agreed to serve as assistant village manager. Now therefore, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, John Young is hereby appointed to serve as assistant village manager effective January 5, 2015. Section 2, his service in that capacity is at the pleasure of council and may be terminated at any time for any reason or no reason. Section 3, the duties and responsibilities of the assistant village manager shall be determined by the village manager. Section 4, the village manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute the employment agreement in form substantially similar to that of Exhibit A, which is attached to this resolution. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect on the first day of, I'm sorry, the 5th day of January 2015.
So.
Can I get a motion? Sounds like Jerry's in hurry.
I was just trying to save your voice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I do have one question. The section 2, his service is the pleasure of council, is that really true? It's not really at the pleasure, he's at the pleasure of yours.
Yeah, I was going to say the village manager.
Yes, please, thank you. You don't want to, you don't want that in your contract.
Yeah.
It's not in the contract.
It's, oh, good.
But that should be amended for clarity.
Yes.
And we're keeping him, may be terminated.
Yeah.
You want that?
Keep that part.
Keep a swim.
So I'll turn it over to Patty, although I will say that I was one of the people that was part of the search committee and interview committee, and was very impressed with John. I'll let Patty talk. Who else was on the committee and just describe the process a little bit?
Chris Bonjourneau, who is a village resident, was on the committee. Melissa Van Zant, who's the finance director and will work directly with the assistant village manager on economic development issues and things like that. And Lois McKnight, who is the community development director and assistant township administrator for Deerfield Township, also sat on the committee. It was very similar to the chief selection committee. We brought in the resumes, we reviewed them together as a group, talked about the pros and cons of each, decided who we wanted to interview, interviewed four people. John came out on top and decided he wanted to come work here. So ladies and gentlemen, John Young. Come up and introduce yourself and?
Hello. Hi, my name is John Young, yes. Don't say it that fast, because it's just one syllable for each word, so that's just fine. But I look forward to working with all you guys. I met several of you guys, the council members, tonight, and I've met Karen at the interview, and I met Judy, how I came to observe the staff, and Patty at the interview as well.
Meet and greet, you met Mary Ann McQueen at the meet and greet, as well as several of our citizens. I think Chrissy was there, Lauren from the newspaper, several of our citizens were there.
I've got Ruth here over there.
So.
But yes, I look forward to working with you guys, and hope to see you guys in January.
Okay.
Great, thanks a lot, John.
It might be also helpful to just be clear that although the resolution states we have not had this position for 15 years, which is true, it is kind of a combining of positions that had existed and have, were combining functions that hadn't existed. So it's not as if this is a whole new position being created out of whole cloth. And it was a decision made really quite some time ago, very near the end of Mark Kundif being here. So thank you for getting it done so quickly.
Oh, absolutely.
Didn't take her long to realize how important that was. So I guess we need to take a vote. All those, oh, comment from citizens?
Yes.
Okay. Back to counsel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Welcome aboard. Okay, and then last, we have Resolution 2014-63, Authorizing Payment of an Invoice with a Then-And-Now Certificate in the Fourth Quarter.
Whereas the finance director has pending invoices each exceeding $3,000 for services or supplies that were ordered and delivered prior to obtaining certification from the fiscal officer that funds were available, and whereas both Sections 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code and Village Policy require prior certification of the availability of funds for major purchases, and whereas the ORC provides an exception allowing retroactive certification when the requisite funds are available, both at the time the purchase commitment was made and when payment is due, known as a Then-And-Now certificate, and whereas the finance director states that sufficient unencumbered money is and was available, both at the time the purchase was made and at the time payment was due for the obligations listed below. This is for Squire Patton Boggs in the amount of $15,651.50. Now therefore, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the finance director is hereby authorized and directed to issue a Then-And-Now certificate for the obligation listed above, and to pay it from the appropriate account upon receiving a properly executed Then-And-Now certificate. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
This is pretty self-explanatory, but Patty, go ahead.
Squire Patton Boggs was the company that apparently the village had contracted with to do some work on the CBE project, and since the CBE was voted down in the referendum earlier this, or in November, I was going to say earlier this month, but we're in December. So Squire Patton Boggs submitted these invoices to us for payment. The money is available, it's simply a then-and-now, because of the dates on the invoice is more than, they're more than 30 days. So that's why we have to do a then-and-now for them to be paid.
Questions or comments from citizens? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now is the part of the meeting where we hear from citizens about items that aren't on the agenda, and since there really is very little left on the agenda, it would be just about anything you have to say. You come up to, and when you're recognized by myself, you come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and three minutes, Judy will be timing three minutes. So, citizen, Zoe?
I'd like Joan Horn to step up with me, if that's all right, just for moral support. Hi, my name is Zoe Van Eaton Meister, and I live at 316 White Hall Drive here in Yellow Springs.
I'm Joan Horn, 1635 Spalan Road, Yellow Springs.
Thank you.
All right. I'll just get to the meat of it. I wrote a letter, as you probably have seen, addressing two issues to the Yellow Springs Police Department. The first issue is the process involved in the hiring of the permanent chief of police. And the second issue is the altercation that occurred between Sergeant Penrod and a Yellow Springs citizen. I attended the HRC community forum that took place on November 23, 2014, where there were serious concerns brought to light about the current predominant distrust of the police department. One prevailing desire voiced by virtually all six of the small groups is that the new chief be a person who lives in the community and knows the community members well. We have two such candidates, or had two such candidates, that I'd like to bring back to being active candidates, Sergeant Nipper and my husband, Officer Meister. Two weeks later, there was a front-page article in the Yellow Springs News acknowledging both internal candidates when these men were simultaneously informed that they were not even being considered for the position. Both are strong candidates, both meet the requirements, and are vested members of this town. I feel strongly that this is an injustice to the Yellow Springs community, and that they should both be independently reconsidered, especially with the revised job announcement and change in the minimum qualifications. Although even without that revision, I think that they both exceeded the minimum qualifications. Sergeant Nipper, as we know, has been serving in our village for 41 years, 15 of those as a sergeant. The incident that occurred on November 15, 2014, in which a Yellow Springs resident videotaped a sworn officer of the law, clearly documents the sergeant violating the citizen's civil rights. Preventing the woman's constitutional right to record the sergeant is of major concern. I find it unacceptable that this law officer has not even been placed on administrative leave while the investigation has been conducted. We simply cannot allow law officers with questionable behavior to carry a gun and a badge. It is far too dangerous to risk the public safety until we can be as sure as humanly possible that the officer is fit for duty. At the very least, I would like to see demotion and leave of, leave without pay for a significant period of time for this unlawful and despicable behavior. And this is a revised copy of the letter that was published in the newspaper, and the letter has more in it, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, good timing.
No.
Oh, okay, I didn't know you, which speak, go ahead, Joan.
Well, is that okay?
Sure.
I've lived in Yellow Springs long enough, so that I had the pleasure of having the former chief of police, Brody, as a second grader in my classroom. That just indicates I've been around quite a while. I also had Kelly Fox in my class, as well as a number of other people. I've been here a long time, and it seems to me that the chief really can set a tone for what happens in the village and how the police conduct themselves. I've been dismayed at some of the things that have changed since John Brody stepped down, one of them being ushering kids across the street before and after school. I think that's an important part of the task, even though it seems small, but I think for the kids, it's a very important thing. And I have been dismayed at the sense of sort of militancy, especially with the use of the SWAT team approach that happened earlier this year. And I would like to have the police department be more geared toward being supportive, compassionate, caring people who are looking forward to a wonderful community to live in. And I think that people who have lived here for a time have vested a lot of themselves in this process, and I think that they have a sense of the community, which I feel is quite unique. So at any rate, I urge you to consider some of these other people that Zoe suggested, because I think they would be a great asset in our department.
Thank you, Joan.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Other comments, other citizen concerns? Okay. Did you want to address anything? I mean, we've explained the process with the police chief. It's gone through a process, and I think that there are other candidates, and it's really up to the staff and the committee as to who, how it's moving forward. And I think it's been explained pretty well at past meetings, and in past, so. And the other issue is still with, under consideration, and still being. Chris, do you want to?
We, again, I mean, at times, the wheels move slowly when we're talking about protecting the rights of others within the context of the disciplinary process. It is moving along, we're getting into the final stages of that, and I expect that there'll be.
Naomi did exercise her right.
She did.
To a third-party predisciplinary. Today.
Which means that that will probably, the earliest the decision on whatever discipline may be imposed by the village manager would probably be in about two weeks, because of that process.
I am hoping to expedite that, because I think this needs to be disposed of. She did exercise that right late today.
And I also think that you're bringing in an outside.
That's correct. It's Chief Wilcox from Enen PD.
Okay.
Ms. Vannan.
Can you describe what, if I say wrong, please correct me, a third-party disciplinary hearing for a police officer is?
The village handbook, the village personnel manual, within part of the disciplinary process, has a provision for any employee, not just a police officer, but any employee who's facing disciplinary action, has the right to exercise and request a predisciplinary hearing before a neutral third party. And in this case, we chose someone outside the village, which is Chief Lou Wilcox of Enen PD, has agreed to be that neutral third party and hear that hearing. What happens there is that that person looks at the investigation, looks at all the evidence, talks to the parties involved, probably yourself, again. Then that person listens to the employee and makes a determination as to what they believe to be the facts of the investigation, and they make a recommendation, which I am not obligated to follow, but am obligated to take into consideration. It's essentially an extra step in there that ensures on the employee's side fairness and equitability. Chris, would you?
I would agree. I mean, fundamentally, what we're talking about is an opportunity where the individual who, in the context of their employment, has an opportunity to present additional evidence that maybe has not been presented in the investigatory record, which could explain maybe there was something going on at a personal level that maybe that this person would want to have part of the consideration of whatever the outcome of the hearing might be. It's just, it really just comes down to the simple aspect of what's fair, and that employee has a right to present his or her case in a situation like that.
Why did you choose Enen?
Because that chief has no ties to this village or to Sergeant Penrod as far as past employment. While she did it for a while, worked part-time for Enen PD, Chief Wilcox was not there at that time, so he does not have a tie to her. that time, so he does not have a tie to her. We didn't want to choose Green County for obvious reasons, and we didn't want to choose Montgomery County because of Chief Hale's ties there, so we looked for someone outside that realm that wouldn't have any ties to anyone involved.
Any other citizens' concerns? Amy?
Thanks for coming forward, I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Amy Magnus, I live at 155 Brookside Drive. I just wanted to make one comment about the process of, for the search for the police chief. Is that there, I'd like to see the, whenever a candidate is selected and takes the position, I'd like to see the process that was begun, the community process that was begun continued in some capacity.
Absolutely.
And specifically to address, you know, with the police officers that we have on fours, opportunities for gaining experience, so that we can grow our, especially supervisory experience, because I think that would make for stronger internal candidates. Thank you very much.
Right. Thanks Amy.
And I'd like to address that, as well as a couple of things that Zo said. I absolutely agree with the comments that you want an officer to be invested in the community, and I absolutely am taking into consideration everything that came out of the HRC forum, and all of the comments that I've gotten from residents via email and everything else, because, you know, that, if they weren't able to make the forum and they felt, you know, a need to contact me, a lot of them have done that via email. And so I am taking all that into consideration. It was the first thing that we discussed at the first meeting of the committee, is the results of the forum, and that these things needed to apply to the chief. And I also absolutely agree that the discipline starts, the example starts at the top and works its way down. I absolutely agree with that, and that is something that we have actually talked about, how we need that to work and to grow the officers in that way. So please be assured that I'm doing as much as I can to take all of these things into consideration as we go through this process.
And council is committed to continuing the community dialogue also. I think we talked about that at the last meeting, when HRC presented their findings from that community forum. And I don't know, I think that they're, you're developing a plan of.
That's right, yeah. So, you know, what was brought up at our last meeting were some ideas, some suggestions that we're going to be working on at our meeting this month, and continuing to develop ideas to bring back to council.
Great.
One thing, you know, I don't know where we would stand and so forth, but I did read today that President Obama, one of the things that he had recommended, and folks that he talked to, recommended portable or clip-on cameras.
Button cams.
In that, he gave the number of communities that have and don't have, and in appears that he may be leaning toward helping out the smaller communities, so I think that's something that.
Bless you.
We should, you know, explore, and given that we have a small department, and we normally only have two officers on duty at a time, that there may be a way that they could share the equipment and be able to download it once their shift is completed, and then the next person would have a clean camera, whatever. It's something to think about.
It is something that we have discussed, is the button cam or the lapel cam or belt cam, so it is, it's interesting to hear that.
Right.
It might be federal funds.
Yeah, we do have cameras in the car, but again, if we want our officers to be more community-minded and so forth, they're going to be out in the cars more.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that is, and statistics has shown that as more and more officers are wearing cameras, the amount of disputes or allegations on either side seems to diminish.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And both parties are really protected, because you have a visual plus audio.
Absolutely.
Recording of what really took place, so.
Thanks. Very quickly, I just, we just have somebody else that, go ahead.
And I just wanted to say, in addition to the body cameras that were talked about, there's also a larger effort towards community policing, and so that there should be opportunities for training that open up from that, and I, again, love to participate in that. Thank you very much.
Thanks Amy.
My name is Dakota, and I live here in Yellow Springs, and I was just wondering if our department has body cameras, or if they need to buy them?
We do not have body cameras at this time, correct Chief? Nobody, we don't, because I, there was discussion as to whether one person had bought their own, but as a department, we do not have them.
That's correct.
We have them in the car, dash cams?
We do have dash cams.
And are those on at all times, or does the officer turn them on? How do they operate?
They go on on a traffic stop, or?
They can be activated different ways, like when the overhead lights are activated, that will automatically pick them on. There's also, they can manually turn them on, there are certain keys that you can buy and computer program, you know, if the car decelerates or reaches a certain speed, you can have the cameras turn on automatically. So there's different automatic feeds that will cause it, and then the physical officer deciding to turn it on.
Okay, but thanks Steve.
They need to be downloaded so that they can get more information if there was an incident.
Can you come forward? I know it's a pain.
Sorry. Just like any computer, my name is Zo Van Eaton Meister. They need to be downloaded so that the memory is there for new information, and there was an incident just over a year ago where that was not done, and so there was nothing on videotape, which was very unfortunate, so. They need to be monitored, and that, again, comes to a supervision issue.
Right.
So, the supervisor wasn't making sure that the employee was doing that work, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes Kate?
Kate Hamilton, would the furtherance of justice fund be something that could be used for the cameras?
I believe so, there are some restrictions on that, but they just loosened them up recently, and that was kind of a discussion we'd had as far as the cruiser that was in the budget that we removed. So I think that, I think those are under, electronic equipment can be used, furtherance of justice can be used for those.
Thanks Kate. Any other citizen comments? Okay, I will close the citizen comment portion. The only other piece of business we have, other than talking about future agenda items, is a survey. Brian, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the Community Access Panel Survey.
Great. So, the main mission of Community Access is, according to the ordinance, is to assess the needs of the community, and one of the things that we realized is that we had not really done that in a while. So for the past couple of months, we've sort of been working on different ideas, looking at what other communities have done, and we've got it down to, this would be on a half-page, so it would be a half of an eight and a half by eleven. And the idea is basically to fulfill that mission, to figure out what do citizens want from Channel Five and from Community Access. Obviously, we've been doing a lot with the internet, so we want to look at that more and see if there are some things that we're not thinking about, what other kind of content can we offer? And so what we'd like to do is get the survey out as soon as possible. We are planning to use Survey Monkey, and also put it in the paper as an insert, yes.
Brian, one of the things that we discussed at CAP was putting them on the heavier stock paper.
Right.
To mail them.
Yes.
Is there a decision about?
Yeah, I think we'd like to do that still.
So would it be, is it like a large postcard format?
Yeah, and then we would have a place for the address on the back, stick a stamp on, so you can mail it in, or do the Survey Monkey.
Okay.
And you plan to use the questions here that you sent out, that was in our package?
Yes. So I guess one thing is, if there's any feedback, anything that looks unclear, or something we might be missing, but I'm excited about the initiative. I mean, I definitely think, it's been a while since we've really figured out how citizens are using Channel Five, and with this movement, again, towards more online content, it would be good to see how people are using it.
I think, I don't have a concern, I think it's good. I'd like to get this out.
Great. All right, yeah, we're meeting, like I said, on Wednesday, so our plan is to sort of get the PR schedule going, and then get it out by next week.
Okay. Manager's report?
One thing that council should be aware of, and I believe you all know, is Ms. Fannin has requested that a criminal investigation be initiated into the incident that she had with Sergeant Penrod. That has happened, Clark County Esso is going to be conducting that investigation. We did contact, I don't know if Chief was able to get a hold of you, we did contact Fayette and Madison Counties, but they both said, since Clark had agreed, and they both indicated they had full faith in Clark County. I did meet with Ms. Fannin for two hours the other day, myself and Chris Conard, spoke to her about the incident as part of my, part of the disciplinary. And so Clark County has begun that investigation, I think they've already spoken with you, right? And so we will be awaiting the outcome of that. That is separate from the disciplinary process. The disciplinary process will proceed internally, and we won't be waiting for that decision to issue our discipline. So we will move forward on that.
Patty, real quick, and it might have been in the package, now that investigation, the results, or whatever that comes of that investigation.
Of the criminal investigation?
Who does that go to?
Clark County will take the results of that straight to the county prosecutor, Mr. Lewis. And in the end, he will make the decision as to whether he's going to file those charges or not.
Okay, thank you.
I have offered John the Assistant Village Manager position, and he has accepted. John was actually, I had asked him to come to the one on the fifteenth, but he explained to me that he was going to be down in Nashville visiting his folks, and I didn't want him to have to drive back, so that's why he's here this evening. I am awaiting the final contract from HNTB. We will have a resolution at the next meeting for council, and I think it will be a good resolution under the circumstances. The Xenia Avenue sidewalks are complete, and the cemetery street project will be finished this week. They're putting in the last couple of taps up there. The saw cuts in the street have been paved back over, and it has been seeded and strawed. They will be moving the mailboxes again for the folks, but we've made arrangements for the mail carrier to be able to get to the mailboxes. That was kind of a problem, the residents weren't able to get their mail for a long time. That has been resolved. We did receive two additional applications in the extended deadline for the chief of police. The selection committee, the advisory board is looking those over to determine if we want to interview them, or simply move forward with the two finalists that we have. Council does need to set a day to do the council interviews with the two finalists that we have now. I did ask everyone to bring a calendar with them, so that we could set that and get that moving along. I'm hoping to have the council interviews the same evening as the public meet and greet for the chief.
And that is, what's that date?
It is whatever we decide it to be.
Oh, okay.
I will tell you that, right now, I have meetings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, this week, and Monday, Tuesday, next week, so.
So there is, earliest would be the week of the fifteenth?
Well, I mean, we could do it Wednesday or Thursday evening next week, if that's, if that's, if council's available to do them then. I mean, the two candidates are sitting here.
I could do it the tenth.
Public Art Commission meeting's the tenth?
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's always the second Wednesday.
I thought I got moved, because it's not on my schedule.
But, I mean.
I mean, Thursday, the eleventh, that'll allow us to publish twice in the paper.
I'm available then.
At what time? Like seven?
I think she's thinking of earlier than that for council, and then.
Yeah, earlier for council, and then have the meet and greet after.
Like, so at six, or how early?
If we could do.
Because I've got a departmental meeting at four fifteen on that day.
What's that?
On the tenth?
What's that get you in here?
That means I'm four fifteen to five thirty. I could be here at six, but that's the earliest.
If we do six, six and seven on the tenth for the interviews, and do eight to.
Nine thirty?
Eight to nine thirty for the public meet and greet?
Or can you do, can the candidate?
I think that's right.
Trade off, so that the candidate can be in the public meet and greet?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When they're not in the interview?
Sure.
That way, I mean, nine thirty seems awfully late for people to have to.
Usually we have, people can be in the council part and ask questions, is that how we're picturing this? So it'd be an open meeting in council, so there'll be opportunity for the public to ask questions.
So that does make sense that maybe we have, but we wouldn't want the other candidate, so it would be good for there to be the public session in A and B.
We can do it.
Except people will, if people are that interested, they're probably going to want to be in here, listening and asking questions.
We could do it the week of the fifteenth, and just do the actual hiring at the first meeting in January, if you wanted to do that.
I can double-check my departmental meeting schedule, just to make sure that didn't get changed. Yeah, December eleventh. So you were saying the fifteenth?
The fifteenth is council, but the week of the fifteenth is?
Are there a couple, you have Environmental Commissioner Marion Wood.
I can't do the sixteenth.
And I do actually have to be there.
On which day?
The sixteenth, what is that, sixteenth? At five thirty, and then CAP is on Wednesday, so.
No, CAP's not, is on the third now.
I'm sorry, you're right, and I did notice that, so yeah, that's open again.
Could the Arts Council meeting be moved either to Tuesday or Thursday, because it sounded like the tenth seemed to be okay, except for that particular meeting?
I mean, is there anything, can the December meeting even be canceled potentially?
Well, we have, we have a guest speaker coming.
Oh. The PAC?
Yeah, about the motorcycle, who is.
I mean, anytime the week of the fifteenth is okay with me. I realize it does put it back, but it just seems like there's just not a lot of time between.
I can do it, yeah, I can do it anytime that week, except Tuesday, except the sixteenth. Well, I always said that it would be Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday for me.
Thursday, how about Thursday, December eighteenth?
Yeah, that's better for me, Wednesday.
Thursday, December eighteenth, council interviews at six and seven thirty, or how do you want to do the timing? What time can we start?
I can start, it's early, my semester is over at that point, so.
Okay, so.
We'll start at five?
We could start at five, we could start at four.
Why don't we start at four? Is that, start at four, interviews from four to five thirty, and from five thirty to seven, and the meet and greet from seven to nine?
Say that again now.
One interview from four o'clock to five thirty, gives you an hour and a half.
Gotcha.
Second interview from five thirty to seven, an hour and a half.
Gotcha.
And then the meet and greet from seven to nine.
Gotcha, okay.
Everybody's good? I will get that all scheduled for council. Okay. Two other things that are not on my report, the question the council had about the Mercer Court sidewalks. If you were to take the sidewalks out, the sidewalks would have to be put back unless the village petitioned the planning commission for a variance to make that a, what's called an estate. an estate-style street. It's not wide enough to not have sidewalks per the zoning code. So if the sidewalks were taken out, they would have to be put back unless we formally petitioned to be allowed to not put them back. The second thing is, there is a...
Does that, before you...
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound feasible, or...
You know, it's feasible to do it. I, I don't know that I would encourage council to do it, because the estate-style street is, the street was not built to conform with the description of an estate-style street in the zoning code. It's not wide enough. And so I don't think it's something I would encourage council to want to proceed with. But...
The only reason I ask is, you know, looking at the condition of the sidewalks...
Right, right.
And the possibility of having to take out a number of trees.
Right.
You know, so it's way more than just...
Right, it, I mean, the best option would be to, to repair and rebuild the sidewalks, but when you do that, you're going to damage the tree roots anyway, so some of the trees are going to die back because of the damage to the roots, and it's kind of a conundrum. That's why I don't like to build sidewalks near trees, or plant trees near sidewalks. But maybe it's something that John and I can get our heads together on once he gets in, and we can try to figure it out.
Sounds like a John project.
Sounds like a John, we've got lots of John projects.
Can I say something about that?
Sure. We've got lots of John projects.
One of the things I do, my, it's going to be old job, is the tree guy. And city sidewalks and trees, of course, don't get along. We have a lot of trees heaving, tree roots heaving sidewalks. So one of the things that I've looked at pursuing in Bellevue was actually trying to install more of a flexible paver-to-style around the tree roots. And that allows the tree roots to continue to grow, but the tree, the sidewalk will still remain, and we looked into some cost estimates about that, so I can get the information to you if you want.
Oh, just bring it with you when you come on the fifth.
This is not going to happen, any kind of...
We'll wait for you.
You have the whole winter to work on it.
Not doing this in January.
The only other thing is, I had meant to have this included in packet, it's apparently one of the things that I forgot to get to Judy during the short week. The village personnel manual and the way it addresses part-time employees who are eligible for our benefits, it's applied unevenly, and we need to make it uniform across the board. And the simplest way to do that is to make a wording change in the personnel policy. Instead of saying that the village pays fifteen percent of the premium for full-time employees, and then we pay a prorated percentage of the premium for part-time employees based upon their hours of work. But it's unevenly applied for various reasons, some because they came in under a different manual, some because the employees are exempt. The easiest way to do it, and this would affect two employees, is just to change the wording to read that the village pays fifteen percent of the premium for all eligible employees, regardless of the number of hours worked. If council were to do that, it would affect the budget to the tune of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars annually for two employees. That's total for both employees. So that is something I would like council to consider doing, just to make everything uniform. It's very difficult right now, you have to take the number of hours the employee works, and it's a percentage of that based on the number of hours, it never comes out right, it's different for every part-time employee, it's just really confusing.
Is this something, could we, is, would council entertain having Patty bring that legislation to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
And that would go in effect in when?
It would have to have two readings, because it's an ordinance, and then it would go thirty days after that. But our open enrollment was last month, anyway, we, we sign up for the month of December, because we got in early, so...
I mean, so there's no benefit to doing it as an emergency?
Not really.
Okay.
Judy?
Oh. Okay, I found that EDRLF report that you folks wanted, just for your consideration at some point or another, and it's just been generally busy, and we're getting ready for 2015, which seems really abrupt. Is that it?
I'm sorry, I do have one other thing, and I skipped right over it in, in my report. No, it's not in here, because this is the old one again. The task force did offer us several vehicles that they had confiscated. I turned down three of them, two Cadillacs and a Lincoln Navigator, I turned those down. However, I would recommend to council that we accept the other two vehicles. The first one is a Ford Expedition, which is what we were looking at buying in the police department, anyway. It is a 2003 Ford Expedition, and it has, it does have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles on it, but there are some pictures of that. The other is a 2001 Toyota extended cab Tundra pickup with a cap on it, has about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles, but both of these vehicles are in great shape. They're confiscated, they're no cost to the village, and we could definitely use both of them.
And what would the, so the Explorer...
The Expedition would be repainted and become a police vehicle.
And what about the Tundra?
The Tundra, actually, I would probably clean that up and drive it myself, because I like trucks, but, and that would make the Taurus available as another staff car.
Okay.
And it would also be available to Public Works, like when the electric department delivers the flour and sugar, they could have done it out of the Tundra, instead of tying up the van, the meter reader van. I mean, you can always use another small pickup.
Okay.
And it has a cap on it, which is great.
Would you have that painted white also?
I wouldn't, I don't care if it's, I probably haven't marked, but...
No.
Yeah, so if it's...
We might be able to see.
If it's acceptable to council, I will, I will move ahead with that.
Is that furtherance of justice money, or is that...
It's, and we don't, that's confiscated vehicles, they're, yeah, they're free of charge, correct.
Thank you. Oh, Judy, were we, had you gotten through?
Yep.
Okay. So we have future agenda items. So we just added the resolution for insurance, employee insurance.
Mm-hmm, ordinance.
Ordinance.
It's amending the personnel manual.
Do we need to do, we don't need to have legislation for those vehicles you just talked about?
Um, I don't know, I'll have to look into that, probably.
So we'll have the HNTB resolution at the next meeting, we'll have, let's see, and you, we will have something for the skate park, contract for the skate park?
Yeah.
We're opening bids on the eleventh.
Okay.
What about our law council? We have bids out?
We, we had the RFQ out, and everyone has their copies, but we have been so busy that council needs to get together, and we need to discuss and rank them like we did, to decide who we want to come and make a presentation to us, just like we did with the consultant. We can schedule that for whenever council wants. I had sent letters to all of those folks telling them that we had just gotten bogged down, and that it would be after the first of the year before we consider how to move forward.
Okay.
Just because they got so crazy, we didn't have time to...
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, I just wanted to make sure, since it's not even listed as an agenda item.
Yeah, we probably should add that.
I mean, it's the kind of thing that would be done in executive session, or at least partly, or would it not?
Yes, it would be done, at least partly, in executive session, to do the ranking.
Okay.
So add legal RFQ review.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the ordinance, 2014-29, second reading, is that, when is that?
That's the, your budget order.
Oh, budget, okay.
And then you have the transfer of funds and declaring an emergency, that's your 2015 transfer of funds. So that'll get just one reading. And then you also have transferring funds from the general fund to an OPWC grant line.
That was cleaning up that grant fiasco that Melissa had figured out.
So one of the goals that Mary Ann had was to bring something to the next meeting related to the streamlining of the commissions. And I guess in particular, she wanted to focus on code of conduct for commission members first, so I think there's a good chance that we'll have that.
So that's December sixteenth, okay?
Fifteenth, yeah.
Is it fifteenth?
Mm-hmm, so fifteenth.
Okay, December fifteenth, okay.
Did we get any more applicants to work on the...
No. Charter?
Charter.
Charter review, no.
I think we may need to do what we did for the planning commission seat when we opened, we mailed out, we brainstormed on people, and we made, we mailed a specific invitation to people that we thought would be good, since we're just not, people often will step up if they're asked, but they don't always, they're just not always paying attention to all the ads in the paper and the thing, so I think we may need to be a little more proactive with that.
Was that you and I, Brian? Did we, when were we committed to that?
I think we talked about it.
You did.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll, we'll get together and...
Okay, so then do we...
Figure out, you know, because I don't remember now the timeframe, I know we had to do it next, you know.
The notion was that that committee would be seated at the very first part of January, so that they could start working on it, so it is getting a little bit tight.
Well, and the, remember, the charter amendments have to be on the ballot.
Have to be on the ballot.
So we're not going to be in time for May, so we, we're actually going to be cutting it close for November.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's it, it goes past.
Okay.
So as far as generating some of those names, how would we go about doing that?
I think council can just send, send them to you two, if we have any ideas.
Yeah, give us some ideas, because we, I think we only had one, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Maybe we should explain the charter review. Do you think you could explain the press, what the charter is, and what the review entails, just so people are clear on it?
The charter is the governing document of incorporation for the village. It essentially explains the village government and how it functions. Charter review, the charter has a provision for the charter to be reviewed every five years, which I think we're overdue for, if I'm not mistaken.
Definitely.
And the, the review committee is to be made up of a variety of folks, including many of them citizens, residents of the village. So Judy had sent out, put out an ad in the paper and on the website, asking for folks to volunteer to be part of this review committee, and to suggest and recommend to council, and, well, actually, to put onto the ballot, I think it goes directly to the ballot in November, for revisions and changes to the charter. And once those pass, the voters by popular vote, they become new amendments to the charter, and therefore, new amendments to the way the village does business.
I mean, the council approves those, the council...
Council does approve?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then...
Because there were recommendations that we couldn't accept the last time.
Okay, that, okay, I wasn't, that part I wasn't...
Is it, we approve them, and then they go to the...
And then they go onto the ballot.
Right. I think the other, you know, now thinking about it, the other, the other piece that might be complicate matters is the legal, is our solicitor, and the fact that we are probably going to be starting, we may be starting with one and ending, there may be a transition.
Well, I think that you can start the initial work of the committee without the solicitor present, because you're going to want to start reviewing it and digging into the charter in depth.
Although, the thing that we do need from the solicitor, and this is actually what, what pushed us the last time we did it, were a number of things that we got from John Chambers, where our charter wasn't complying with the law. So, you know, those are things that we're not going to know, that we're going to require, our solicitor's going to have to tell us, hey, you need to change the charter, because state law is now...
I think, I think if council makes an effort after the first of the year to review the RFQs, and then decide who they want to have presentations, you do presentations in February, and make a decision, you can have a new solicitor in here by late March or early April, if, if we decide to choose someone else.
I mean, not to, not to move it up, but what about December fifteenth?
For...
For reviewing the RFQs?
If council feels ready, I mean, I've already done my analysis, so...
Yeah, I've done mine too.
I've read through them.
I'm ready to do it on the fifteenth.
So just, can we meet at six o'clock, or do you want to meet at, do you want to stay late?
It's going to be a long meeting, from the looks of it, so...
Yeah.
I don't see if there's...
Let me just check. So there's a lot of legislation.
There's a lot of legislation.
There's going to be a lot of reading.
You'll be tired. The rest of us will be all right.
Yeah, we're just sitting, isn't it? See if we can keep up with you.
Oh, I see. Yeah, no, I can, I can come early that, that day, so fifteenth at six o'clock.
There's a couple things on here, on this, on the future agenda items, the sidewalk policy, you know, that's something that, it sounds like John is going to be the perfect person to take that on, so maybe we can put that on his plate and not expect it, you know, not expect that it's going to be in the very beginning of his, of his tenure, and then also, the CEDO agreement, that's really going to be his, in his park. And then, I'd also like to add prioritizing economic sustainability discussion, or commission, whatever, and again, that would be something that John would be involved with. So I would say those, see those things being maybe mid to end of, of the first quarter.
You'll be busy.
Yeah. We're already planning your life.
You noticed she said "life." She said "general," she wasn't talking just professional here.
Anything else, council, for the, no? No? Okay.
Well, yeah, you know, again, you know, if, I'm not, any of you have had a chance to see the, the work that was done by the contractor on the sidewalk, I thought they did an excellent job, you know, even, even patching the, the space between the new curb and the street. I noticed that they had filled that in also, and it really looks nice. Are, are we going to put up any, a couple Christmas trees, is that the plan?
We're not going to put up trees.
I mean, just have them...
We looked into that, nobody wants to loan them to us, and they're fairly expensive to purchase. What will happen is that, once we get the lights up, we'll decorate the streetlights, to at least have something, and we'll do the trees that are there and the streetlights, and we'll go from there.
So it will be somewhat festive?
Right.
Okay.
It was a great push the last, that Wednesday, that Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll tell you, I was amazed, and I was relieved and thankful. And then folks were out on Friday, working also, there were some issues on Friday that got taken care of, so our crews worked through the holidays and did some good work.
And, yeah, and Mike and I were actually up in the village on Saturday, looking at the house and looking at different things, and it seemed to be pretty busy downtown, so...
Yeah, I heard, I got great reports from merchants, both Friday and Sa, or, yeah, Friday and Saturday, small business Saturday.
I went down a couple times, and seemed to be a lot of foot traffic.
Good.
Which, and I hate to say it, you know, people have to be more careful as they, they cross Xenia Avenue. I know we only have the two spaces, but people are just coming from, from nowhere, and just, you know, so...
The de facto crosswalk by Tombs.
Yeah, so we just, you know, have to be careful as we drive through downtown, you know, during the holiday season, because folks are excited, and, you know, they're opening car doors, and they're just, you know, not looking, so...
Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, see if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.